Start her up. You got her going, Ms. Bussman? Okay. Call the February sixteenth Barnes County North School Board meeting to order. Recognize our teachers. Three here, four, missing one over there. Thanks for coming. Turn it over to Mr. Severson for some thank yous and congratulations.
Just thank you and congratulations to our, our coaches and their, and their seasons in basketball. Girls just finished up, boys will be starting next week. And then also Brett, thank you for your assistance there on that, on the tour. Would have helped us, like I said, we, we don't really deal with that stuff. And I know Buss is gone today, so I wasn't able to get him to come, so thank you for, for answering those questions for us.
Thank you. Anything on the agenda? Nothing, okay. Then we'll move to consent agenda, which is our minutes, bills, and financial reports. Any comments or questions on any of those? Too much. Any questions? If not, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
And Rob, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chad, Lindsay, that's a roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Those are approved, move to committee reports. President's report, I, I had Lindsay send out a C in the packet, the, the handbooks for negotiations. So everybody knows how that process works with the notices and everything that's got to be done. So you all see that, you notice that was in there? Now tomorrow is on the seventeenth at noon, there is a school board lunch and learn on superintendent evaluation. So if you want to check in on that, did you get notices on that? Or if not, I can forward it on to you guys, because I did get one.
You forward it.
What's that?
I didn't get one.
Okay, I'll fix this. Yeah, yeah, I'll forward it on. Because then you could, I think, and then in the past, they've always, if you couldn't get on at that time, they could, you can go in and then listen to it later, because they sometimes record that. So, that's all I got for president's report. Rurantech, we, nothing right now, because we're going to meet on Thursday, we moved it back this month. Budget and finance, are we here? Yep. You got some thoughts on that, Mr. Severson?
When, I mean, when, when does it look open for you guys? It'd be you and Lee. Brett.
And Eric.
And Eric. Evenings work best?
Yes.
Six o'clock, seven o'clock? Seven, okay.
Yeah, go ahead and pick one, there's no such thing as a good time, though.
So, any preferences on any dates that do not work?
How quick are you going?
If it doesn't matter, I mean, we can go as quick as you guys want, if you want to wait, if you want to go in March, or you want to go, we could go last part of February, else we go into March.
I think sooner the better, in case we have something too to discuss.
So we can come back or whatever.
Okay, so, do Wednesday nights work for you guys?
Sure.
Okay, so we either February ten, February twenty-fourth, or March third, whichever you want.
Don't matter.
No, twenty-fourth is good.
Twenty-fourth?
Make it so.
So, budget and finance?
February twenty-fourth, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Okay. So that's all we need there, move to building and grounds, you're looking for the same thing?
Six thirty on the twenty-fourth.
Six o'clock.
Who's on, who's on building grounds?
That'll work for me. Me and Brett. I mean, if...
Well, I could get here by six, I mean, depends what time it's on.
You're on the buildings and grounds too, okay.
It's Mike, Brent, Brett, and Rob.
You mean, how what time, how much time are you thinking there?
Well, I think we just need to just talk about some things and just decide how we're going to go forward. So I think a half hour or an hour at the max, you know, we could be done in an hour, so.
Six, should we shoot for six, sir?
So building grounds at six, I think.
Six, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. Okay. Okay, moving to curriculum, anything you report there, or what? Or, no, for right now.
Well, we, we did, we, we met, we just, what we talked about basically was what we, what our goals were as, as a group. And I think if, as a board, what, they, we kind of talked about what they think that, what the role should be. You understand, and then Michelle, just talk about what?
Well, we just, so we sat there and we're like, for curriculum, so the board members are on there, but the people that really need to be there would be the principals, obviously, for curriculum. And then whichever teachers it involves. So social studies, obviously, Mr. Samuelson better be there, and then we'd have elementary reps attend when it's looking at social studies. When it's math, Mr. Schaefer better be there, because he's teaching the math, and, and so on. And so we, I call, I keep calling it fluid, like it's a fluid committee with the people that always have to be there would be the principals, superintendent, and then the board members would just be there as, to report to the board committee. So, did I get that right?
Yeah, we started, we're on the social studies at this, at, we decided we were going to do social studies, but then COVID hit and we, we kind of got lost track. So we just need to sit down and visit with the principals.
Yep, and Mr. Samuelson, and the reps.
And whoever the elementary reps are, and kind of figure out where we want to go from there. If we can get it in by fall, that's what our plan is, if not, we would go to next fall.
But we'll take the lead from them.
Yep, yep.
Got to raise hand back.
Next up was ELE.
Got to raise hand back there, Mr. Seaver.
So are you taking away the, because there are teacher reps that are on that committee, are you saying that those teacher reps aren't part of that committee anymore? You're just going to have whoever's involved with that, if we're going to get Mr. Seaver on that here?
We're talking about the leadership.
Nope, he's talking curriculum committee.
Curriculum committee has teacher reps on it.
Right, it has teacher reps, but in discussing, wouldn't it make sense to have the teacher rep that is representing social?
I'm just asking, are we going to take away those teacher reps and just have the one that's involved, or?
Those would be the reps, is what, how we looked at it.
Because I know that I'm a rep on the curriculum committee.
Okay.
And I know there, I think there was another, I think, Beth.
Beth and Jessica Jones, right? Am I right on that?
I'm not sure. So essentially, yes, that's what it would end up, so if elementary broke off, they had two for each area, then it would be those two plus whatever content area at the high school level, plus the two principals, plus the board. So we're still looking at about seven people potentially that are going to still be a part of that.
But it wouldn't be the same people every single time. It would change based on curriculum area.
The rest would change based on the.
Yes. That is what I was trying to say.
What's your take on that, Stacy?
I'm fine with it, because I'm on enough of any.
Okay. Does it, that make sense to you?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
I have suggested rotating all our teacher reps for the leadership committee, because that's supposed to be a lot of curriculum discussion, isn't it? So why would we have both?
So where are you, can we should serve this year?
Well, if, well, if we're doing yearly curriculum reviews, then I, I would maybe make it a little bit longer, but... Because that's where we have a lot of discussion.
Absolutely.
When we're wanting something, and we bring it to the leadership team. And I know that teachers want a chance, well, some teachers, but want a chance to contribute to it, so we rotated them out.
So then base that off of the curriculum?
Yeah, so if we're doing social studies, so we'll find somebody who was interested to be on the social studies committee, or to be a part of the leadership team.
Would that be, would that be in addition to, like whoever's on your leadership team now?
Well, Stacy, you're on the leadership team.
It is everybody you named, along with counselors, so.
I mean, like if Stacy's on the leadership team, and they're doing social studies, Stacy's still coming for leadership?
He would be transitioned out, and Samuelson would be replacing him.
Or why wouldn't we just add to that and still?
Because then eventually you'd have everybody.
Every other leadership committee rotates you, like, I shouldn't say every other, I'm just throwing some out examples, but every third year, and within a term or more. But if we're doing curriculum, I would suggest maybe we overlap one year to get them transitioned, and then...
I guess where I'm going is every leadership meeting probably isn't going to discuss curriculum.
No, but we do have discussion.
So that would that each meeting be maybe a different group coming in?
No.
We need one.
They would still contribute to other leadership discussions as part of it, but we're consolidating two groups, so if there's less committees. Because we have, I mean, there's even more that deal with some types of curriculum, like the MTSS committee. I mean, MTSS is all curriculum too.
That actually would make sense, because then those reps for that subject could come to the district curriculum and fill in the reps from the board, so then...
We would have to have a separate meeting to those that were present.
I mean, we could do two-year terms where we decide on a program, and then they're on the next term where we're implementing program to provide feedback. You know, like, and keep you guys posted on how it's going, because if you have science teachers sharing that how inspired science is going this year.
Do you have?
But then you'd also be bringing in the next group that's...
You would be bringing in the next group to talk about the next curriculum.
Just to work on the next curriculum.
So does your, your leadership committee, are they staggered? So you have this group that's on year one, this group on year two, and they're constantly having a veteran group there with the new group?
Well, the veterans are us.
You're the constance.
Yes.
And the consers.
The consers.
The counselor, and Miss Beth, yep.
All, yep. I like that idea. I think, I think, I would think the staff would like that too.
It's, it's your committee, so I think, I think however you guys decide to run it is, whatever works for you guys. I mean, we shouldn't be telling you how to run it.
And we could discuss that at the March meeting, find out how we want to go forward with that.
Okay. Technology, Mrs. Bitsley, anything, or nothing for this meeting?
Nothing that I haven't.
Okay. Burke, report.
She's here.
So we actually have only been formally able to meet once this year, just with scheduling and stuff, but we did get a meeting in December, and basically just an update, all of our staff, minus two whose phones don't allow, are all updated on the WhatsApp, and we checked that. Because as people are getting the plans, it's moving them off, and so we do just a command and checks, just to make sure that everyone's still in there. The staff has been really good at letting me know what needs to be restocked in their buckets, because they use, especially the hurricane stuff, kind of day-to-day, so they just keep me updated on that. The reunification site buckets were updated for this year with all the kids, just in case we were to have to evacuate, even though we're not planning on doing a drill, it's still going to be ready to go. The reunification duties have been updated, staff has been moved around and stuff. The, I did, I attended the campus safety summit, and their big thing this year was, like with the virtual learning, being able to pick out those red flags virtually, as compared to what it looks like seeing those red flags in person. So there was a lot of, lot of speakers on that. But I think, like in talking with a lot of the staff too, it's, it's stuff that's, it's kind of common sense. So, and it's not like we're zooming with a hundred kids at a time, it's fifteen or twenty, so. For staff CPR certifications expired in December, so we decided to, at the fall in-service, re-certify all the staff at that time, which actually will work out really well, because American Heart just came out with like a handful of new updates for this five-year schedule. So we're actually still waiting on some of the handbooks and, and videos and stuff for that. So we'll do that in the fall, and then I'm hoping to be able to do a sub-training, so that the subs know, like, whatever, how, whichever room they're in, everything's going to be the same. And then if they're this teacher, what job they would have if we have to evacuate, and where to find all that information. I've been trying to hit and miss, catch the ones that I can catch when they're here, but I think it just would be nice to do all of them at one time. So, and then the primary grades, we got them through the tour of the kitchen, so that in the instance if something would happen and they would be out in the conference by themselves, they know that's a safe place they can go to, and then, that they can either hide in there, or there's, or we get over there too. That's, that's kind of one of those places that, like preschool, kinder, first grade, they always see the front of. So we like to take them back through and control the where that stuff is, and they kind of get to meet them a little more one-on-one, so. But yeah, that's, I have another question, I think we have duties last year, I thought it was the same duty we had last year.
Any questions? Not, thank you. Mrs. Bussie, pre-K six principal report.
Our, I talked a lot last spring about our KLSC summit, and they finally rescheduled that, it'll be in-person on April eighth. We had paid the registration fees last year, so there's five of us going to that on Wednesday night, and we'll be back after school on that Thursday. And then just an update on the points, there was, there's been seven thousand three hundred ninety-one points given, which is up a couple thousand from the last meeting, and a hundred and sixty-three, five hundred and forty sent out. We're in a different position than we were when we signed the calendar for substitutes last year. Brainstormed who we lost and have, and so professional development looks a little bit differently, because we're not able to do the half days. Mr. Severson, maybe you can talk about that later, or?
Well, we can do that.
Questions?
Any questions? Not, thanks. Mr. Wilson, seven twelve.
Well, I don't have much on top of the wall once we get into the extracurricular stuff on that. The only thing we got coming up on March second, we have the ACT test coming up here at DCU. And then we have parent teacher conferences last Thursday.
Did everyone get supper?
Hey, did you hear any difference this time?
No, they never fed me.
Because I had her, I had her set up from five to eight.
Yeah, and we blocked off time for the night.
So I need teachers to actually take a dinner break, so.
How did attendance work on both ends for you?
Well, we made ours optional, depending on teacher input, so if kids were meeting academic expectations and behavior expectations, they got a note saying it was optional. So, it was decent, some parents didn't follow the Zoom or the face-to-face depending on, and the night days had requests from teachers in the future. The kids just, like, the buses left at two fifty-five, and their first conference was at three. So allowing them some extra time to go to the bathroom and get things set up, which makes perfect sense. So that was the feedback that I heard, but parents, I mean, seem to like the choice between face-to-face or Zoom. So also, how was yours?
Well, I think at the high school, I think we might have a whole, like, maybe ten student families that came in.
That actually came in.
Did you have many Zoom conferences too, by comparison, or was it all?
We had, I think we had a couple, a lot.
Well, not much other than, so.
I thought there would be more points passed already, but I didn't know there was any, right?
Just curious on the participation there, so.
The, the spring was always lower. Each year it's always lower. I, I don't know, must have a gate that might impact it a little, but, I just think at the, at the high school level, it's just, they know how to look at the students' grades and see what they're doing. You know, if the students aren't getting in trouble behavior-wise and their grades are fine, parents usually don't have questions as far as that goes.
I think with technology too nowadays, they're more able to stay in contact. You don't get those just once every semester too, and then a check in a week.
Yeah, we had a couple parents that had stated that, that I've already been in contact with you guys recently already, just before we come to get, so you get that. The ones that you would like to have come in are usually in contact somewhere or another, whether it's emails, whether your school would be somewhere or not, with.
I see.
Communication that's not taking place, it's just, it's already taken place and been discussed, and they'll be coming, let's see, because we do a pretty good job. Once kids, you know, behavior-wise or committee-wise start to slip, students get in contact with their parents, or they get in contact with their relatives.
Spring is when I E P starts doing, so we do a lot of the I E P meetings of the conference sciences are all around this week period.
A.D. report, please.
I'm just finishing up our basketball schedule for next year, contracts out, referees, things like that. And then the extracurricular, I'm going to, I'm going to, we'll do that when we talk about the learning plan, because it all ties together with, because you guys will have to talk about what, what things you want to do with, once we get into that too.
I have just a couple quick, if I can back up one month or, well, right now, we've got the wrestling co-ops all settled down, you sent that in.
Yep, yep, that's, that's true.
Last month, I forgot to ask, because I see we have some penalties to high school activities, we've had two or three this year. What are the, those penalties we're getting from high school?
Those would be not testing, the, the coaches not getting their tests in.
I was hired after a few days.
Yeah, she was, she, hers was legit, when we hired, I think, well, the other one was Jasmine, and that was that cross-country one that, that she was hired late also.
So that's what the penalties on high school activity?
Yeah, yeah, those are, I'm pretty sure that's what the only, the ones we have were, were that the, the coaches were hired at a later time than, the other years was, you were right at the very end of the, of the window and didn't.
Yeah, there's like, there are two different requirements, and one was passing, so we paid the fifty dollars on that.
Yeah, that, I think you did the test, right?
Well, I literally found out that date of the test would do that evening, so.
And the, the clinic was already over.
Yes.
That's what it was, the clinic.
That's what they are, okay, okay.
Yeah, those would be, like I said, that, that would be, we've got the coaches set, that thing would be, those, those will disappear.
Any other questions? A.D., not extracurricular committee.
Oh, like I said, that will move that learning plan, and then really not a lot, you know, for, we got regionals and dist-, district regionals coming up for, for basketball this month, so.
Anything else, superintendent?
No.
Okay. Full business, we got an update on strategic plan, anything new?
Nothing, I, I don't think we didn't really, we're going to have to start deciding to when we want to start looking at reviewing and going forward again, so. Do we want to wait till spring, or do we want to get started on that?
Well, we talked, wasn't it talked about April, or was it, wasn't that what, on the strategic plan, we talked about April?
Perfect, okay. And we're good to go then.
Then we have the second reading on three policies.
Yeah, we missed that last month, like pointed that out, we missed, we missed the, we missed, we did the first readings in December, forgot to do them in January, so we just need second readings on, on each one of those.
So you want, I suppose we do them individual?
Yeah, we just do it individually.
I just had one question on that first, you know, the one, which one's first you got here?
Uh, correct it on, correct it.
No, so that way this reads, all of them, you're not approving, they're all going to come to the board?
That's what would happen if we had, yep, so.
Let's just want to be clear of what we're looking at there, yep.
So if it were, then we come, and one of the things about is the, like, they want to use, the post-prom, juniors want to get together and use a room, does that need board approval, or is that just?
Well, that's what my, that's where my question is, if I read this, it's all coming here, is that really what we want in there?
Yeah, that's what, that's what's going to be an issue, because, you know, if they call, like they called this morning, thankfully they called today for Thursday, we have a board meeting tonight, so I said I would, I would discuss it tonight, but...
So I guess that's why I'm asking the policy, is that, did we want the administration to handle some of them, or according to this, they all come to the board?
And I think that one, you know, and I don't know if that's meetings and things like that, I mean, I think you could, you know, but the way, like I said, the way it's worded, it would be anything that...
The way it's worded, everything comes to a board meeting. That's just my asking on that clarification for that. That's how it was intended, or what you guys thought?
Yeah, because that, that was exactly how the policy, the asset of the policy written in the School Board Association, so that was what, I guess we, we never really, that was something we never really thought about, that would be everything, we'll go, we'll have to come here for approval. If we do it, we'll make people have, we'll make groups have to plan better.
It's making them have to plan a month ahead, yeah.
But they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to call tomorrow and say, hey, can I, can we get into the school on?
And it's everything, I mean, serving a lunch, or when Stacy does them, other years, I mean, it's using the building, I don't, I'm just curious, I'm asking the question.
I think it should go to the administration.
But, but the thing is, I, I don't like the fact that, they, they should plan out, because if you read what all it has to do, they can't call on a Thursday, expect to, expect on a Saturday to have the building, if, if he's, if superintendent's going to have to check for insurance and all that jazz.
Right, you got a lot of stuff in here.
You got a lot of stuff in here, so, so I mean, maybe by giving, saying the board has to approve it, it might be just...
I'm, I'm fine, I'm just asking the question.
I'm just thinking, so that way you can, you know, the administration say, I got to bring to the board, so you, I, I, I can tell you right now, I can't do it in two weeks, because I don't have another board meeting for three weeks.
Or do we want to give them the leeway to maybe make adjustments, but as a standard policy, it should come to the board?
It's just a question, the way I read this, you know, that's just what I was asking, just to be clear.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I mean, it would be fine to do that, and then if, I mean, if we do see that there's issues, then we may have to change it, but, you know, like you said, there's some things in there that, that we didn't have before. You know, that are in there, but we've got to do some extra things based on COVID and things like that, so, and that's the reason that they want, they want this stuff.
And you're going to write some regulations, so they're going to be all for everybody?
Yep. Because they would have to follow, any, anytime they would be here, they'd have to follow.
Mr. Seaver has a question.
Right, I need to be put on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Okay.
It's all like you're going to have board approval on, use the facility.
That's, I guess that's where my question is, because we, that's what we're, if that's where we're going with, yeah.
So what, for, what would, what would your use?
For summer?
Oh, for summer, see, yeah, so I suppose that would be non-curricular, so that would be, so what do you?
I guess that's where I was coming, are all them going to come to us, or are we going to, or is that?
Yeah, because in the past, like camps and things like that, we've just scheduled.
Right.
That would be in your discretion first, prior to this.
Yeah, prior to this, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is just going to make everybody plan ahead.
But my only thing is, they're going to bring it to the board meeting, and the first thing we're going to go with, well, Mr. Severson, what's the schedule, can you do it? I mean, why can't they handle it?
I agree with you.
Tracy.
Um, I'm just curious clarification, like my reminder last fall, I used it for, it was non-curricular, we used it for truth suffered, prepare some stuff. So that would be something I, I would need approval of. So that would be something I, I would need approval of, because I wouldn't use it, because it's not my curricular.
There's a lot of questions.
So do we, do we need to re-look at this one? Table this one and have a look at it?
I'd say yes.
I think yes.
I really think it should be.
Yes?
You have a scheduled speech meeting, and that's non-curricular for.
But that, that's also falls under the facility use agreement.
Yeah, all of it falls into all this, yeah.
Man, I'm thinking back as facilities director, you should just be in charge of that.
So we, I mean, we have to send it back to the.
But I mean, you have a calendar that, where you have wrote on there, you know.
So do we look at policy, do we relook, policy committee relook at this, and come up with that?
I think just say that it's your job.
Well, I think Brent's right, all we're gonna do at a board meeting is say, is this all right?
Can we schedule it?
Yeah.
So we'll just, should we table it, and I'll look at how to rewrite it, send it out to policy committee, let them?
Is that what the rest think, I mean, because I think there's just some things we, that could be bounced around even at your leadership team or something, just to take a look at this? See if some of these teachers have looked at it a little bit closer, see how it reads?
And I could bring this, and I could take it to leadership committee meeting on the third and.
Brett's got a motion to table the three second readings, is there a second to that?
All second.
Hey, Rob, the other discussion, if not Lindsay, we'll call on tabling those.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Yes. Brent.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Tabled, so you're gonna want to set a policy committee.
Well, we'll, I'll send it to leadership, have, have them look at it, for, have them look at it, make recommendations, and then we can.
Then get back together.
They can get approved, and if we need to meet, or if we just need to look at it, and, and put some wording down, and then get back and.
Nope, sounds like a plan. New business, unpaid leave policy.
Okay, this is just clarification, because again, it's been interpreted that, that it's been run through me, but when, when Mike pointed out, there is a policy that says, any unpaid leave has to go through the board, so do you want, as the board, do you want to keep, continue to keep that policy? If it is, that's what we'll do, because right now, when we, through, um, past, past practice, it's been, this runs through me, but then, as Mike pointed out, we do have this policy, so we're gonna have to decide if you want to keep the policy, it no longer, here, it no longer is with me, it comes to you guys to, to approve.
Are we gonna follow our policy or change the policy, I guess that's where it belongs to. So.
Because it comes down to people that have a contract, that have X number of days.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're wanting more time.
Yep.
Yes.
And we negotiate those contracts with them, so that's what it's coming down to.
Yes.
It comes down to, for school boards to say it's a breach of contract.
Right.
The only one that can, allow that is the, is the board, yes. And that's what our policy says.
That's the question, the question is, do we want, is that what we want to do, or do we want to say, you have that authority to, if somebody call, if somebody says, I'm out of days, I need two more?
So I'm gonna be devil's advocate here, I'm not saying it's anyone in the room doing it, but what you run into is you can get people that are administrators, that are going to allow it for some and not for others, that is a potential hazard when you allow it to go to one person or to administrative.
And see, and all.
No, I'm not saying that's happening, but that, that can happen, and I think that's why we've made contracts and have policies.
And that, in the four years, I haven't denied any unpaid leave, so that, that's why it came up, because now, we, we, Mike pointed out that there's this policy, so we can't really be, technically can't, I can't be granting that if it's the policy.
Well, that would, just to help avoid the appearance of impropriety by any way or favoritism by.
So we want, we want to keep the policy then, and any, any unpaid leave has to come.
They would have to come through the board to ask for that on extra leave.
Is there a protocol in that policy, so we have a direction, there's point people who ask? Like, I mean, they fill out a form and send it to the school board, and who goes to them at the next meeting?
That's what they, you will tell them how, what your procedure would be, ours, it basically says they have to come before the board to ask for additional leave that's not in their contract.
Basically gonna be.
So there would be a, like, a meeting as soon as it's done out?
Yeah, yeah, so if something.
It would have to be approved before the, before Lindsay does a payroll for that leave. Because it'd have to be approved before Lindsay would do a payroll for that. Well, that's gonna be putting people ahead of the game too, it's gonna make them look a month ahead of time.
That's only for contract, right? How does that work for like salary, they just?
Days will get paid.
Right.
This is for contracted.
Put unpaid leave, they're still not there the day you want to do.
So that's, that would be a good, that'd be a good question, do, what if, they just say Lindsay doesn't come to work one day and just says, I'm, I'm gonna take, I'm not gonna come, I'm gonna take the day off, and doesn't have any leave?
Then she would have to come to that, just like the other, any unpaid leave.
So she couldn't say.
Isn't that what that says?
That's not what you told us.
Is that what that says?
This summer though, because you said that if we were gonna take time off unpaid, we'd have to do it, because we can't have over forty hours. So technically, I take almost every Friday afternoon unpaid, when there's a school board meeting, because I can't have overtime.
Right, how does that actually read, I don't have the policy, just.
They just said, I thought it didn't.
Any unpaid leave or something?
Yeah, any unpaid leave gets approved by the school.
It wouldn't be if you put your.
But I'm not here when I'm technically supposed to be here. And how do you get money from someone that doesn't have leave if they're not in a contract?
Well, yeah, because, because it's basically a, a unpaid PTO.
Well, it is, but you still need that accountability to know, you can't just have randomly not.
Show up.
Well, yeah, you got to, it should be run through their supervisor, just like any other job that is a.
Well, that's where we're at, who's the supervisor here? You want to run it to him, or you want to bring it to us?
Because that would be, what, what Mike thought, that would be, that's the, that's for teachers that are contracted.
To me, that, that what's that written is more for the contractor.
Yeah, the contract. The hourly would be more, I would, I would guess would, would be more the supervisor.
Right, because you're talking about overtime and different things there, yes.
Okay, sounds good.
I take that policy is more for contracted, because it's like a breach of contract, because you have a contract.
And that's what I was wondering, how it applied, whether it applied to everybody, or just contract hours that.
So basically then, if, if a teacher's gonna be gone, and doesn't, and, and it's not paid, they would just have to let Lindsay or I know all the work, they put on the agenda for the next week.
Right.
Or meeting before they, before they leave.
Before they leave.
Yep.
So I have a question, so what if you happen to have a sick day, if you have to take a sick day, then the next super meeting, would it have to come to this board meeting and stay that?
Because that would be unpaid leave.
I would say, to get it forgiven, you would have to have.
Well, I took it unpaid, but it's probably forgiven?
And it likely wouldn't happen before the payroll even happened, I mean, because some meetings are only scheduled once a month.
Because it's a good possibility.
It's a great question.
And he did put out a schedule for March. Well, the way it sounds, regarding today's plan. Just think that, the way it sounded was if you plan to take unpaid day, you had to, or proceed to get it approved.
Yes.
Well, using her example, that, that's inevitable.
Right.
So, I mean, I think just.
First of all, versus sick days, makes a difference.
You have template, or maybe that one is something that school boards would look to change, or retouch base with them?
I can, I can touch base and find out what they, if they've got any updated or anything.
Because right now, that's what, that's what we've got in place, and we, we're trying to follow all the policies we've got there, but, so that's why we're bringing that up to talk.
I can get ahold of.
Isn't like we're gonna lay her down, we're trying to, okay, where do we go from here, there's the policy, what do we do here?
Yeah, because we've, we've done, like I said, we've done with past practice, where they've come to me and said, I'm gonna be gone, and I've approved it, and then Mike said, you know, if you look at our policy, it says.
We've heard some discussion around that, okay, why are you allowing that when we have a policy? If we got a policy, we should follow it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
You could ask some of the other, we've heard that, so, okay, so, I want to say, we've heard it, we brought it up, and we're gonna look at it.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not that it's not allowed, it's not that the board wouldn't allow it, it's just the fact that they, the policy says it needs to go here first, and then.
Based on our policy, here's what should be happening.
Okay.
Um, basically, would it not be feasible to do that?
No, it would not.
Unpaid personal days, like, we are planning a trip to see my dad in April or Easter, so I know, because I went somewhere in November, that I have no days left.
Right.
Right. That is more feasible, so I think you have to make the clarification between Sunday sick and Sunday personal days.
Makes sense too, yep, yep.
So we'll be looking at that.
Yep, and then I'll just get that up, the policy committee too.
Okay. Election date, Lindsay, you got some times, we gotta set that up today?
Yeah, so, in years past, or in recent years, we have gone with the first Tuesday in June as our election day. And last year, Brent was one of the people that was wondering why we did that, and was looking at.
Oh, what was I wondering?
Why we had our election a week sooner.
Than the general.
Than the, than the general.
So I can't find any real reason anymore why they're separate. Everything is handled in Valley City now, as far as county elections and things go, so there's no conflict there as far as not being able to find election workers. That's the only thing I can logically think of that was a problem in the past, um, so to me, it doesn't matter at all. I think at this point, people are used to it being the first Tuesday, but I, I don't know, and last year with how the election was, I have no real in-person experience, so, if we go with the first, we currently have our canvassing meeting scheduled for the seventh, if we go with the eighth, we would have to move the canvassing meeting to the fourteenth, and then we would have two meetings that week, Monday and Wednesday.
The only issue that came up in the past in this thing is now, is you're sending in to the county to ask them what ballot to send out, if you want a school one.
No, we could still do ours completely separate.
We could, but I mean, they're sending on, in there, and, and if we don't have the same date, we had that year when we didn't get anything back in time, right, Mr. Seaver? Because they were thinking it was on the election day, and we were a week early.
Well, I wouldn't see a problem with why we wouldn't have it on the election day.
That's what I'm saying, I think we should have it on the election.
Everybody's in the mood to vote that day anyway, let's just get it all done at once. Now we just have the deal with two meetings in one week, and we'd have to have the canvassing, so the new member came at the next meeting, we couldn't just combine that meeting?
No, because it has to be a set number of days.
There's gotta be so many days after the, yeah, there's specified how they gotta be.
We'll move one up, day and.
Can you move that, I mean, can they hold it one day?
I mean, you can move the regular meeting to one day, I suppose, you could hold one at six o'clock and one at seven.
So they'd have to be separate meetings?
They'd have to be separate meetings, yeah.
I say we do that.
I think so.
I like that idea.
So you're saying June eighth, and then canvassing meeting the fourteenth?
Yep.
That your motion?
That's my motion.
One, one more question, are you also moving the regular meeting to the fourteenth?
I'm moving the regular meeting as well, same night.
That's Michelle's motion, is there a second to that?
Move it to the unregular election day.
Come on, where's my second? I'll second.
Chad got the second?
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Okay, so Lindsay wants to say what you, what you all did there?
I would be able to tell you, the eighth canvas at six on the fourteenth, with regular meeting moved up a day to the fourteenth at seven, boom.
That's it?
I'm on top of my game, ten people.
Well, you made it sound good anyway.
Who is up this year?
Oh.
Rob, myself.
Chad, um, Eric, and then Rob.
It's a Monday?
When's that happen in May, June?
Are you going to reapply, Rob?
Rob, Chad, and Eric.
I might, but I might get voted out.
So that's a Monday.
Trying not to make everybody so mad, Rob. Two days.
Sorry, so I was kind of wrong.
We're canvassing the fourteenth.
Canvassing the fourteenth at six, and regular meeting at seven.
I have the right information.
You have the right information, you have, you have the date for it.
Okay. Superintendent evaluation, I did send out, have Lindsay send that out, on, in with the packet. So if we meet on the tenth of March, I'd like to get her back by at least the third or fourth of March. So I can put it together.
Why is our meeting the tenth of March?
Because we have to have that done by the fifteenth, and our normal meeting would've been after the, afterwards.
You really doubting that, that reelection?
Yeah. Because I had another meeting that night that I didn't want to have, so we had switched that from another day.
There you go, you cleared the schedule for it, good job.
Well, no, it, that, no, I shouldn't say that, that meeting ended up on that day, because I couldn't have it the next week, because of the school board meeting.
Okay.
And, yeah, okay.
So you've got in your package, if that works for you, otherwise we can get it out on paper, but if I can get her back by about the third or the fourth. And if you want to listen, like I say, they've got a little thing on school boards on superintendent evaluations tomorrow. Calendar discussion, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, um, does anybody need a copy of, in front of you, or are you okay with?
I need, I need something.
I need something to look at.
I have option two as well.
I looked at them last night and.
And they get emailed to us?
Yeah, they're emailed.
I am completely out of candy, and I'm a physical membership high one.
They sell candy other places.
I know, I have to go get some, I'm just so used to have.
I will break some next time, just like.
It's been all two years.
Nope, we weren't during, fourth, on the fourth, February fourth.
Nope.
I'll get you a bag, and I'll send it with me. Any requests? I, I have a couple of papers, I like, maybe you got a lot of them, I'm gonna talk to them, yes, that's easy.
Finder?
Not really.
It's my colored copy.
It's over there, so I'll probably have to.
I just need my colored copy, because I need the color to help me out, not gonna lie.
Was that option one or two, I need option two.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay, I have.
You guys can just might have to share.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was optional, like I said, if you have.
Thank you, sir.
That you would like pre-ship.
Does anybody still need option one?
Do you need one?
I do, if you have one, if you don't, like, colored.
Six people responded, all six had various forms of supporting option one, which is the recommendation of administration. Option one starts a little bit a week before Valley City and Holt's, but it's consistent with April Valley, correct?
April Valley changes.
Oh, now they change?
They are starting the, the same time as Valley City, but they are ending their semester one before Christmas, so they are.
Like us.
Like thirty-eight days in the first nine weeks, or thirty-nine or whatever, they're like fifteen days apart between two semesters.
Yeah, and so to keep it more consistent, we did a week earlier.
So this is what we were gonna do this year, wasn't it, when we started, and then it got screwed up because of COVID?
Yes. Um, we also added some professional development, old day is in, so if we return, like, if you look in January, sorry, you, we're returning on the fourth, but on the third, we would have staff professional development, the day prior, there's one there, there is one on the twenty-first, which might be the super conference. I know some are arguing to keep those days, if you don't know, they aren't required anymore for us to take off.
You're talking October.
October twenty-first and twenty-second was technically the, the teacher administrative conference, that was always two days, you could not have school. Basler took that out, the legislature is right now looking at that. That was always two days. You could not have school. Basler took that out. The legislature is right now looking at that. As, as part that, that, that you can't have school looking, so.
So the teachers
That's, that's, that's to look at, so that's, that's not for sure.
So the teachers would come on the twenty-first, is what you're saying, on October?
Yes.
And have professional development and then everyone would have the twenty-second?
Second off, yeah. And they can choose to go to the super conference.
How come we shortened them to day and the one, option one? We're down to one hundred and seventy-three student contact days on option one and one hundred and seventy-four on option two.
Because we have more professional development days.
Aren't we supposed to have one hundred and seventy-five?
No.
No, we're just supposed to have one hundred and eighty-two contact days. And so with eight holidays and, and professional development, it was, it comes out to be one hundred and eighty-two.
Because they're, they're on time though. It's not on, it's, it's not on and the, what we've got in the contract, one hundred and eighty-one days, so use one hundred and seventy-three contact plus the
We have one hundred and eighty-one?
Eighty-two, okay. So you have the parent-teacher conference, two days. We have three holidays outside it and then we have three professional development days. Where's the four? But it gets us to the one eighty-two.
I don't see them on there, because I thought we had one in March too.
Did you count up the other meeting?
Oh, oh, the beginning of the year, there's two, that's why. So about sixteen to the twenty-third. And then then And then another thing you'll see is
So what do you got? You, and how many? You come to one eighty-two, then you got one seventy-three and four.
Yep, four professional, and two parent-teacher conferences and three holidays.
Two parent-teacher and three holidays, one eighty-two, good.
And then another thing you'll see is, um, the twenty-second for December, we put on an early release of one fifteen for students so that the staff can meet and wrap up before leaving for break. And then we also did that on the last day of school. Because they, we have professional development that they would have.
That's the full, what's the full group, we, we were having it's all those, um, schools.
I like ending it.
What were, you say you had various, okay, what were the rationale for one that they liked?
Well, the biggest one, the biggest one was, is any
And they report semester preparation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it evens out, I mean, the days are
Days even out.
Even out, you know, because last year the big thing was is that there was an eleven-day difference between semester one and semester two.
Right, yeah.
So now it's down to four.
Well, coming up with less than, I only got a hundred and seventy-two days. When I add them up according to your calendar, you have a hundred and seventy-three on there.
I don't know, I come through so many days, but that's how I send it to everybody.
Okay.
Are you going to teach a couple of days? You, do you have a different color?
No. Well, on the, on the phone I do, yeah.
Oh, and are you still counting less?
On the, on the option one, you got forty-two days for the first nine weeks. Forty-two days, second nine weeks.
I
Yeah, I got it. That's about eighty-four and eighty-eight. Well, that's just one seventy-two. Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I come along.
And that's, that's where the question is.
That's where the question is, and you got one seventy-three down there.
For student contact days.
I talked about that with you earlier with, uh, the schedule, that first time, four, four, three days.
Yeah, it was crossed up and then rewritten forty-two.
Forty-two is not right for that first time, we couldn't know it.
Well, that would make sense now.
That's why I have it cross, if you look at the, the option one that I gave you down below, it's Yeah, scribble it out and put forty-two. Did I? I meant to put forty-three. Okay, so it's forty-three contact days, first time. Yes. All right. Leave to a math teacher to tell us that we scribbled out the wrong number. Thank you. Yeah, because I'll do the math first and I looked at it and I had that. See, I have my shoes on, but I can't put it on the table.
In option one.
But that's way up. I was thinking of holidays and the last
If you do contact these, I still come up with
Very forty-three.
That's what they're telling me. That's what they're telling me, a hundred and seventy-two contact. They got a hundred and eighty-two.
Yeah, when they show a hundred, then if it's one seventy-two, then four
Am I wrong?
Okay.
It's one seventy-six.
And count the days.
Two is one seventy-eight. And three is one eighty-one.
I'm sorry, I just
Right, no one knows.
If you go, if you count the contact days, it's one seventy-two.
Yeah, because it's the sixth, I think, and the first one did forty-two because it is the sixth of August.
Yeah.
Uh, we're just looking at what you got for August, ten contact days, then twenty-one, nineteen. If you do that, it's a hundred and seventy-two.
Yeah, I'm not saying those are right because so many people have provided feedback and I changed it and I tried to keep up with the changes. So what we have to do is just figure out what do you guys want it to be?
Well, I'm liking option one.
Okay, so how many days do you want it to be there? Is that twenty-two there? Even with the six? Yes.
November?
The six doesn't, yeah, it doesn't show up. I mean, if it is coming, it's
What's that?
Those are PT comp days.
Comp days, so that's, that's the two
Are yours in color?
That's what you add for the, them two comp days when you get to one eighty-two.
I know, I know, I know. Okay, just not the total. Um, I don't know, I haven't done the total yet. I haven't counted these the last. But if you add these, yes, the total's wrong.
Mm-hmm.
So. So we're actually at one seventy-two.
There's ten there, that's right.
Which gives us another professional development day. Yay. Mrs. McMillan goes a little. Yeah. Yeah, we
Isn't that why we were talking about that?
Because we have an extra day. I thought we had, because I was, I was like, I would like to wrap up the year with the professional development.
Because you were gonna do the preschool screens on that day two, correct?
Well, that's this year.
Yeah.
That's this year.
That's
Yes. So if you guys want it at one seventy-three, I can
Well, with that one seventy-two, we just get out to nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just go with day lead.
So we'll just make sure if we want one seventy-three, that's what we'll do, we'll just
Well, we need the one seventy-three to arrive at that one eighty-two.
Okay, so change, I don't need to change the first nine weeks to forty-three. That's correct.
No, fourth nine weeks would be just forty-five.
Change total days.
Okay, but wait, I have a question. Before we do that, I have a question. So on calendar two, you, the sema, I can't even think. The nine weeks ends on the twenty-fifth or the trice, trimester?
On the fourteenth.
Whatever.
The nineteenth.
Fourteenth, sorry, fourteenth of January and
Yeah, so they would, the sema, or the, the quarter would end after Christmas break like it did the year prior.
Right. But then you only have one day off in February, whereas in option one, you have two days off in February.
You have two days off in option two, don't you?
Not in February, you don't?
No, okay, sorry, I'm looking
Well, the late start is still listed and that's where we wanted to go. Feedback from teachers was full day professional development. So it was no school president's day and
And no school on the eighteenth in option one?
Yes, that was meant to be there. That's my fault.
Oh, so in option two
I think that's what we agree on, right, Mr. Olson? That's what you were talking about?
So option two would have eighteen off as well.
Option two, I, I was looking at option four.
February, I feel like we just did this last
But I think we're all, I mean, are we all liking option one? Or we just need to adjust by a day?
I, I think so.
I think so.
And that's
Right, I was just checking the numbers. I don't disagree with
To discuss option one and then I had to try to make the same changes to option two based on notes and
That would be impossible, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, my God.
So we just want to go one more day and go on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
So change total days of the quarters, right, for about
It'd be forty-two, forty-two, forty-four, and forty-five.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Three is still, I didn't have to change it.
Are we still just looking at these or do I need to approve these?
I have to make a change if we send it back out.
With the changes, can we approve it the way it is or do we want to look at it again?
Yeah, you can tell her that. It's already changed.
These ones, we already have it changed.
Yeah.
On the bottom, you have it ending on the nineteenth, but on the calendar, you have it ending on the eighteen. You've already done it.
You've already done it.
People always say, when you know, Mr. Bussin', sometimes I just don't do that.
That's awesome.
That's why we were getting certain days.
So we need one seventy-four.
Yeah, and on five, nineteen to twenty-one.
According to that, so we need the one seventy-four, the four PD days, right?
Yeah. It's all ending on the eighteen thirty. Stuck a little graphic in it.
Three P D, fourteen. Yeah, you got three. So we got three professional development days where we're gonna end up
Four.
Four.
Two at the beginning of the year.
Two at the beginning.
In
One on the third of
October and one on the January.
Four of them, okay.
I make a motion to approve option one for the calendar.
I'll second that.
Approve with changes?
With changes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, now it's already changed.
As long as we hit them on the days, we just fine tune it.
Basically, just move your red dots to the right here. Move your red dot to the nineteenth.
Roll call.
Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Chad?
Yep.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Eric?
Okay. Then we got the discussion on the trimester proposal for pre-K through six. Where we go, since it's on the calendar.
We just approved the calendar.
Um, it was in the Littleton newsletter and we sent it out with a parent, on a parent's service, from doing stuff and then one parent showed up and then Mike logged in and listened on the way, but the one parent we had asked him a perfect question, so I wish I would've been recording it so I could just because some of my teachers are like, oh, I want to know, you know, like, tell your, how you explain this parent.
She asked the one question I would've asked you also. I said I had one question. Is setting the goals and how do you measure that or how does that work?
The goal-setting measure?
Yeah.
Um, it depends on, it depends on, I have an example in my office. Can I look at it?
Yes.
Oh, that again?
The different ones.
Okay.
Bring that thin mint. Just kidding.
You can take that.
Okay, so some of the teachers are having students track. And this isn't to be implemented until later, but some of the teachers wanted to jump into it, so they're having students track different data for different learning targets in the classrooms. This is Mrs. McMillan's. And so what they do with the goal-setting is it's a sheet like this and they meet with them over their writing block and they set a goal. So there's a habits of work goal, a social emotional goal, math, reading, or writing goal. So this child said by this date, they set it on Monday, so she said by Friday, I will get three house points for being helpful. I can measure my goal by putting a tally mark each time I get a house point, because that's how they keep track. And so with the more things that they track, they're able to set those goals.
My question is, a lot of kids won't set their own goals. If they're not, how are we gonna get goals set for them?
Well, they're teacher-directed in the younger ages.
Okay.
So we monitor, like this specific teacher does it on Monday and this part isn't built in yet. So then at the end of the week, they get to self-reflect on giving their best effort, using listening skills, respectful, and a growth mindset. And then they'll take a picture of this and post it to their CSO or Schoology so that parents are seeing that their goals are met or not. And then we, we teach them how to, how to change it if their goal is not met to. Because not every goal, that was a good lesson learned, is like, is it attainable within the week? So that's, like, I want to get a hundred percent on my extra math. If you're at ninety-one, that might be attainable, but if you're a kid who's at a forty-three, that might So then we have to coach them through, like, well, maybe you say, I want to get a fifty percent by Friday. And then that's reflected. And that's what I mean by trimesters, Brett. Um, we're only giving free report cards to parents, but they will be consistently seeing updated time to progress of their students through the goal-setting.
No. Do, does Schoology or, or CSO, does it maintain year, it, you know, every year, so as long as that kid has an account? You can go back to however long ago and look at how they grew or whatever?
For CSO, parents have to download it at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, and as a school, we can download it at the end of the year, um, which would be good because if we're setting social emotional goals and habits of work.
Yep.
When they graduate, if they have to do it, they are collaborating, they can download the portfolios and have documentation. What are you laughing about? Uh, the chocolate? So, um, the parent was wondering, like, is it just a goal on piece of paper to them? But I think you could ask the teacher that does this, we have a really high student, and he would give work just to get it done. Like, oh, here's my work, I'm done. And she's noticed, like, the effort that he puts in or that they put into the work is better because they're setting my goal to drive their learning. So. And I had a teacher there, she answered perfectly, so. Questions?
I think it's great.
I think it's a great idea.
Ask my teachers in about a year if they can
Well, you gotta, you gotta give at least two years to actually make it
No, I wasn't even requiring tracking. I mean, they, they are coming to me saying, you know, what do you recommend for this? And I should, I'm like, well, man, we'll do it now. We're heading in that direction, so. I'm trying to give it a smell that you have And I should, I'm like, well, man, we'll do it now, we're heading in that direction, so, I'm trying to give it a smell that you have to chump. Like, I expect them to do for their students, but, I mean, they are rocking it, so I can't be that here. But with that comes trimesters, so that we can see the progress of those goals and do less benchmarking. And that's why I asked for trimesters instead of quarters.
I would have loved this when I was teaching, especially that first quarter, you get those kids in and you spend so much, I mean, my time can earn for most of the years.
But if it's on one, wouldn't you feel like that's all you're doing?
Feels like that's all you're doing and you're not getting to anything else, so yeah, I, I think it makes sense.
So do you want a motion then, or?
Yeah, we need a motion to move.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to, uh, move the elementary to your trimesters.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If not, Lindsay, roll call.
Brett.
Maybe. I suppose yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Hey, that is approved.
Mike, did I answer a question? They use the Vizen Block time that we have scheduled in to make sure that they're meaningful.
Okay, okay. Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you for the unclaimed property, you got some information there that we need to do.
Yeah, so there has been a credit that's been sitting in my file since the day I started, that Amy had tried to collect from Coke for a refund of a credit that they returned pop. And it's just been sitting there and I know that Coke here has been sold, so I know that contacting Coke is probably not gonna help. And in one of my business manager certification classes, they were talking about unclaimed property and for whatever reason, it made me think to look on there. And we have a credit balance with Coca-Cola somewhere between a hundred and five hundred dollars, they don't tell you the exact amount, but the paperwork I have from Coke, say it was two hundred and fifty dollars. And then when I was looking for Barnes County North stuff, another one showed up for Aflac with, uh, that was a premium refund. Um, I don't have any information on that one, but I figured since I'm doing one, I might as well do two, since it's a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars also. And they just require me to send in some paperwork showing that I have proof of ownership and one of those items is an authorization for me to collect the money on the school's behalf. And so I sent out the stuff that I had and just need a motion and then the board president's signature and then his photo ID also and mine and then to sign this paperwork.
So you just need a motion to.
To approve the Coca-Cola and the Aflac unclaimed credit.
Just the, or unclaimed property or.
Unclaimed property.
Right, you get it.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Second with Cindy. Roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yep.
Lee.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
Okay, so Lindsay will get that, more in the works there. Learning plan discussion is next, Tom.
Okay, um, I guess we'll just start with, um, the one that's the most obvious, the mass face coverings. Um, is there any, we've, we've, we've chatted at, at our level, um, I guess if the principals wanna give input on what their, their discussions, what their staff members are, before we open it up, I would, we could probably do that, that would probably be, did you guys know beforehand what's, what their thoughts are?
The feedback from the elementary staff was to keep it how it is and not to eliminate them a hundred percent instead of if it's working and we get to stay in school. So they would like to see them stay in the commons. And then some teachers are doing stand-up mask ups in the classroom and. They take them off and they're in the gym, they hang them up, so keep it how it is, this is the feedback factor.
High school, it's fifty-fifty in that way, um, as long as you decide if it goes away or keep it the way that it is. As far as the wear of masks, um, the thought was, you know, making it optional for students, staff, if they felt the need to wear it, they can wear it. The way to discuss it, the one class you're wearing it's required.
So when you say you're wearing the commons.
In the hallway, if they're watching.
Oh, the common areas, oh, okay, okay, okay.
So in the entering the building.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Previously what we're doing right now.
That's exactly what we're doing now, in the, up to the individual rooms, but they're wearing it now.
If you're going to optional, would that include buses or not, or are you just talking in the building, if the other side of that, if you're talking optional or required?
If the, if the teacher calls to keep the kids here, I guess it would be.
So in that, in that recommendation, that would be buses included at everything.
Okay, that's, I'm just curious if that buses.
It stays, it stays as is, but their recommendation is.
Okay.
Um, like you said, some of the, I mean, the discussion is, you know, you know, the, the different things of, like you said, staying in school, except, uh, you know, the, everybody that you listen to on our Zooms are all saying, you know, keep your masks, they help. But I, I don't know, I mean, it's, I guess it's, it, it, to me, it, I mean, uh, I've been places where they have no masks at all and I've been places where there's, you know, strict masks, so there hasn't been a difference in, in a lot of cases, so.
And I, I don't think, you know, look, because my last region, since principal meeting, there is a majority of those schools that aren't having masks, although they don't, but there are some that are. So we just have to make the decision that's just the best for us, not worry about any of the outside factors, what, what school doing as opposed to another, because we find ones that are doing them and ones that aren't, it's just, what do we go, and we feel that we should be, as far as that goes.
I personally would like to see them gone, I mean, it's been a year now and I wanna get back to normal, I wanna see people's faces, I wanna see smiles and I just untired of the masks and, uh. I just feel like robots, I feel as a society, you go to Walmart and you don't even make eye contact with anyone anymore because that's just how it is and I don't like it. I mean, it was supposed to be two weeks to slow the spread and here we are a year, I mean, at some point, I just want to honestly announce my thought on it.
And I, and I think the teachers can completely agree with you because social emotional connection is super important at our level and their thought is getting through the remainder of the school year. Because once you have to teach over Zoom for two weeks and plan how a teacher's plan and. At the elementary level, it bites, that is easy way to put it, I guess, and we notice a huge difference in growth when kids are quarantined versus when they're not.
I, I completely agree with you, Cindy, like I just want it to be done, but I also don't wanna be at home again and go through looking at, through assuring to instruct or teach our kids.
And I, I completely understand that point too, it's just, I mean, COVID's never gonna go away, so how long are we gonna be scared to go back to normal?
And I know, um, Mr. Schaefer, I talked, we were above it too, but, uh, he talked about the guidelines, the guidelines haven't changed, I mean, so if you don't wear a mask, you, and you come in contact with it, you have to quarantine two weeks. So those haven't changed, if those changed, then we, I mean, I don't see any reason why you don't, you don't have a mask, but. That would be the, you know, one of the, one of the things that you'd be looking at as far as that, because it'd go back to that, the way it wa, used to, I mean, the way that, well, it would be in our classrooms now, as we, if somebody in our classroom does, they would have to quarantine.
And they do have them off ever since last board meeting within the classroom, you know, the kids, some, you walk into a classroom, some are still wearing them, they don't even realize they are and some have them off and. And the teachers have really good organization going and how they wear them and stuff and. Um, I feel like if you leave that, are optional for teachers, so that we can still consistently enforce that as an elementary, that would be great. Um, Eric, do you?
My recording is, what happens if a student doesn't wear a mask? And what happens if they forget to wear a mask and they go in the hallway, are they getting in trouble or?
Or.
They go like this. And run back in and go.
Grab their sweatshirt and then they, they forgot them when they entered, they asked, they asked for them. We haven't had a single student that's said, I don't wear a mask.
We get.
I mean, is there kids getting in trouble?
No. Nope.
And if you're in the hallway without a mask, you have to get a code.
No, 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 it's just, and most of them automatically just.
We.
Realize that they don't have it on and they, they cover it up or they go get it real quick and it's, they self-correct themselves.
And we there switched from the beginning of the year, um, because we were calling kids out on forgetting masks and stuff and now we kinda just am like, we see with it, where correctly we give you a health point instead. So we switched it to.
Watch in the positive.
Yeah, not necessarily say, oh, you don't have your mask, but the kids usually recognize, once they're walking down and they see you here is on and they're like, oh.
I mean, that, uh, high school, the biggest thing is, it allows them to know, they're allowed to know, they'll put it up, you know, and I, I mean, I've even got a few kids that end up getting the push-ups, that's what's awesome, because, just because it's just a little game, but, and then when I play, but, I mean. So the most part, that's the biggest issue that we, that we have, we've been pretty fortunate that our kids have been accepting of it, because at the beginning of the year, they had the choice and if it was something that they weren't going to be able to do, they didn't participate. You know, by choosing to come to school here, they were, to themselves, saying that they were cooperating, I mean, that's, they've been great at it.
And that's.
As miserable as it is, as, as it is, they've been, they've been really good about it.
And I will, I totally feel Cindy's way, but listening to you guys talk, I'm not in the trenches every day, you guys are. I don't have to do the extra planning, I don't have to figure out what to do for the Zoom and that, so if, if we all wanna keep y'all.
Y'all.
We just went down to Texas. If you wanna keep it that way, I, I'm fine with that and I agree with you, Mr. Stevenson, they haven't changed the guidelines. I don't wanna live in fear either, I want, I mean, I'm, I forget all the time to put my mask on every time I walk into Walmart and I have to go back to my car. You'd think by now I remember, but I don't, so I do wanna get rid of them, but I also value the people that aren't here every single day.
And I don't think they feel it's long-term, I think they just know what this looks like last year and they get through this year and then.
See where we're at.
And I did, I did have a comment too, that, you know, once the vaccinations are throughout, you know, then we can relook at it again.
I mean, we can just do this each month, can't we?
Yes.
I mean, like, so we got till the tenth of March for the next one. I agree exact, I, I wanna throw them away, but if the kids aren't struggling with it, they don't have to have it on in the classrooms now, if the teachers think it's good to keep it, let's just go month by month. Like, if the vaccines get more, we're gonna, worst case scenario, we gotta finish the year like this and then next year should be normal.
Gone completely, or is there another way?
You could, I mean, that's up to you guys, how you wanna, how you wanna do it, I mean, you could step up, but you just have to have it on when you enter the class, you know, I mean, I don't know what the.
I mean, is there another logical thing or is it just go with no mask period?
I think that was, I think we just go to recommendation and they recommend you wear it or if you don't.
We kind of do no masks, make in cohorts maybe, because right now we're in cohorts, we're in masks, so we may be doing no masks, stay in cohorts, which I can tell you right now, that is the one thing that teachers cannot wait for is kids to intermingle at recess. They're, they've been playing with the same players all year, so I would assume that we would get rid of them and, and stay in cohorts and then phase out the cohorts to where we intermingle and. And I know that, you know, we switched, assuming you guys are through visitors, we started doing kindergarten buddies or first grade buddies as long as they're wearing a mask and. It just totally changed the atmosphere, it's so nice to be able to have the older kids breathe to younger kids and they're comfortable doing it with a mask, so.
So we could put this on just another month and so if no change, we're not looking at any motions of any sort.
No, 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 no motions, nothing, we just have to talk about, you know, the next portion of it, would be the, you know, the extra curriculum stuff.
Right, so.
But if we're, if we're saying.
If we're not looking to change it, is anybody to make a motion to change anything right now of our learning plan?
Not right now.
Okay, so then.
That portion of the masks.
That portion of the masks, yeah.
So now we just gotta discuss, um, the prom, after prom, um, the.
Well, it.
Dollars for scholars and.
Yeah, the extracurricular type activities.
Events, yeah.
Dollars for scholars fun night, um, we have student council getting ready to put on snow week, um, and then we have the prom, whatnot. And they're putting together their, their normal traditional week of, you know, themes, their dress ups, but then the activity day and same way with Dollars for Scholars Fun Night. I just think on those nights, mask is optional.
Well, the event is optional, right, for families to go, so.
For Dollars for Scholars, but yes.
Rather than them having to wear the mask the entire time that they're there, and the same way with like, snow week activities, when we're doing things in the gym, that the mask is optional. Teachers wanna wear the mask, students wanna wear the masks, they can, those that don't want to, don't have to, they're taking part in the activities.
What do we currently have for visitors at basketball games and stuff, mask or no mask?
Masks, always sit down.
Masks, always sit down.
No, I'm sorry, the wagers, I can take them off.
And Mr. Stevenson did talk about room cohorts in the wagers too.
Yeah.
He talked about holding the van to the other side so that we can spread out in classes and it's optional for elementary teachers to bring their kids.
At least, at least for the activities, that, that makes sense, if you're participating on the floor, yes, of course, no mask or whatever, but as far as getting down there to it, I think it, I think you just do it just like you would with.
Play the ballgame, yeah.
With your activities.
So if you leave your seat, your, your mask, your mask, anyone should be on the floor.
Yep.
Are you okay?
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, the masks, I mean, 'cause you have, you know, like, and we, we've gotten this comment every single home basketball game that we're one of the most stringent when it comes to the mask wearing, you know. Like, Mr. Schaefer was having their players wearing their face masks even while they're warming up and doing that, those things, it, you know, I, I don't know if, I would do that, I mean, because to me, that's physical exertion and the same way with kids being out there, I just don't.
And like I said, the, the more complaints are coming from people coming into our building, they have to put them on to get, to come up. It's not our people at all, I mean, they're used to it, they come in, they put their mask on, they go sit in their seat and they take it off, but it's just the ones that are coming in, they don't have mask mandates that are complaining.
I've been proud of our school for that and I'm proud of our students that are warming up and sitting on the benches, wearing their masks and the other teams don't.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I think every school has that written, it's just, they're not following through, with the same way with the mask, wearing it in the stands, I know I've talked to several of you, we go out on the road and. There, there's no mask wearing at, at the other places and I think they have it on paper in theory, but they're just not enforced in a lot, so, we have, all around, we've been really, really good after that.
Okay, so for the snow week activities, when they're participating, no mask, when they're in the stands, or not participating, masks, okay? All right, um, the fun Dollars for Scholars Fun Night.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's optional a bit, they can.
I say no masks, I mean, I give.
I said, I agree, I say optional on everything, even the snow week, because what are you, you're gonna, these kids are gonna have to have them in their pocket or if they go to the dance, they gotta have a mask on and then take it off. I agree, I say optional on everything, even the Snow Week, because what are you, you're gonna, these kids are gonna have to have them in their pocket, or if they go to the dance, they gotta have a mask on and then take it off, put it in the pocket and put it back on.
Pocket to dress me?
Yeah.
When you say Snow Week activities, are you talking about the the?
Pepper alley.
Pepper alleys and stuff?
Or.
Or are you talking about the dance?
Well, then we haven't, we haven't talked about the dance yet.
Because we're just talking about pepper alleys.
We're just talking about the typically in the gym.
Activities and, actually, the dance would be, we'd have to discuss.
That's a completely different thing.
That's gonna have to be along with the prom one.
Right.
Well, I think the prom, the dances would be the same thing as the activity day. I think the mask, whether you say no mask, I think those ones are the same. And I think if we're not gonna have masks at that fun night, then we don't have the mask at the dances.
I agree.
But if we do at the fun night, then we do at the, because those are all after hours here at the school, it's just.
Facilities.
Yes.
Agreed.
I say make them optional.
And then, then what, and the other issue would be like the, um, grand march. Can we allow everybody here like we have in the past, or only limited? And if you come to watch it, you wear a mask, and there won't be, if you if you let everybody in, there's not gonna be social distancing for the grand march.
Is our capacity change if you?
It's five hundred.
Five hundred?
For the gym, yeah, but we have to figure out what the commons area and stuff will be.
And I mean, we're not gonna hold house five hundred for that anyway, so.
Not.
I say that'd be optional too, and you.
Do the, are they gonna do the grand march in the gym or the commons?
They're waiting to see what.
I mean, that would be different, right?
Yeah, they're waiting to see what the, what we're gonna, if we would allow.
I mean, would our number, would our capacity be different if we're doing the congregating in the commons?
Well, that's what we have to figure out, because it would be allowed.
Because then it wouldn't be five hundred.
No, you wouldn't have five hundred in the commons. You know, we have to either put them into depth, have them dressed for the gym, or, you know, do the, everybody in here or something, but.
Where do they want it?
I don't know, they haven't, they haven't. They just, they're waiting to see if they're gonna be able to start playing. Are we okay with them having the dance, if they come back?
Because then they're gonna have to come play where we're gonna be, and then we could set the other part of it for the spectators.
So if we're okay with them having the prom, should we let them set the granders or grand march for attendance and things like that?
I think so, I mean.
And then bring that plan back to you guys and.
Because you're gonna have to have a different amount of, for wherever they're gonna go.
Right.
Because the little gym is different amount than the big gym, and the commons would be a different amount of people, yeah.
So we're okay with them having prom, yeah?
Yes, yes.
After prom, we're okay with after prom? They just need to set up guidelines, it's the same way.
Same thing.
Just, just like any other, any other group that would set the guidelines.
Okay, then after prom is meeting Thursday night, will allow them to use the media center for for their meeting, as long as they're masked? Just like the regular, just sort of meeting tactic, okay? And Snow Week, we're good?
We're allowing outside dates for prom, right?
Well, that's what they're gonna have to bring that plan in. And then you guys have to approve that, so if they come in and say they want outside dates, you guys would have to approve that. If it, unless it's just, unless you're just gonna keep it as our school case, so that'd be something you guys would have to discuss once they bring that.
Bring the, lend the plan, yeah.
So if they don't have it in there, you wouldn't worry about it, but if they brought it in and said, we want other schools or other people to attend, then you guys would have to approve that.
Well, I'd like them, I'd like them to be able to have outside dates.
Yeah, because I, so la- I mean, last year, there were a few schools that had their Snow Week and their dances, and I got communications from their principals checking to see if they were. Told for, if it was standing, they'd go or whatnot, which they were, and, you know, just out of curiosity, I asked them what their restrictions or whatnot, and they didn't have it, so.
But I know some schools that had restrictions, and I seen, I have relatives in town that weren't allowing outside dates, and all the leading dig in back that.
Okay, Eric asked, how are you gonna explain Snow Week?
What do you mean?
Far as restrictions, what are you gonna tell the kid, that's, tell John or Mr. Samuelson, we're gonna wear no masks?
Is that all, is that all optional? Motion on that, or is that what's been decided here?
Or the dance part was.
The dance part?
No, no.
During the week.
During the week, it was, just like what's in the school for the activity.
The activity day, which would be on a Wednesday, that would, from what I took from you guys, is that as long as they're out on the gym floor and stuff, they don't have to have it.
Right, right.
Once they went into the stands, they need to have it back on.
Right.
Correct.
That's how I was.
And dances, optional?
The dance would be optional, the fun night is optional, the, uh.
Grand march.
Snow Week dance is optional, but.
All right.
Okay, do we need a motion on that, that's, next question.
I'll make a motion, I'll make them optional all the time.
Or outside school.
All the time.
For what was just said, what you just said.
No, he wants to make them optional all the time, so it wouldn't be the activity.
That would be in school too, like, uh.
So that includes, that includes.
All the time.
When they walk in, they don't have to put them on.
Right.
Okay, so you're, you want to change the plan to optional?
Correct.
Okay.
We talking back up to school and everything?
Yeah.
Everything.
I mean, we only heard from a couple of us, we don't know what everybody thought on that.
Brett, were you in this conversation about fifteen minutes?
I was.
Yeah, but we moved on before anybody finished.
But we didn't talk about it to that point.
Nobody wanted to change it.
Oh, did we come to that agreement?
Yeah.
No.
That's why there wasn't a vote.
Yeah, because there was no vote to change.
There was no discussion on changing it, you just moved on.
That's, that's what I thought.
There's, there's, there's a motion, you get a second before you start discussing.
Yeah, let's just.
There is a second to all optional.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Well, you, you want to discuss it first?
You want to discuss, more discuss, you have it for everything, school, buses, everything, is what you're saying.
Right, I mean, it should be optional at that point, I know.
Yeah, we, the teachers have all the control on it, if they want to have it.
That's right, if they want to hold it on, line on the grade school and.
Well, that's just, that's just step back home, do we have parents?
If I have a kid that says it's optional.
Yeah, I know where my son will be if it's optional.
Yep.
I would like you to move forward with it, how it is during the school day, and optional for any events after school.
Well, right now, we've got one for all optional, any other discussions on that motion? All optional, we have a motion and a second on. Any other discussion? No other discussion, roll call, not all optional.
So we can't provide more like thoughts?
Nope, not right now. All optional. Lindsay, roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
No.
Rob.
I'd love to say yes, but no.
Chad.
No.
Lee.
No.
Brent.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
No.
Eric.
Okay, so all optional has failed, so now we're looking at another option.
Now we can put out.
Now we can make your other motion to go another way.
Yeah, make the other option, then we'll leave it during school, the way it is, and all outside activities, optional.
Motion is for everything in the school building as is, out of school, optional.
During the school day.
During the school day.
Right.
Get a second before you start discussing, get a second first.
There's a second to that.
Second.
Second, okay.
So Brett was the first.
Now, you understand where we're, everything in the school, which would include the activity for Snow Week, would have the restrictions.
I would say within school hours.
John just explained, so that would be during school hours, so the restrictions would be there.
So then.
The optional stuff would be the dance.
Dance.
Fun night.
Fun night and prom.
Thursday night basketball game and stuff. Thursday night final basketball game, yeah, optional, yeah.
Optional, yeah.
We going optional, okay, basketball game.
Or we don't change nothing, because there's one game left on that.
Miss, can I ask Mr. Wilson a question, the activities?
That would be that they're wearing their masks at all times during the Snow Week activity.
But I thought.
I thought during gym.
But I thought during gym, they don't have to wear them.
Yeah, if we're in our cohort, they wouldn't have to wear that.
They wouldn't have to, right?
No.
No, no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to.
But there's no cohort during the activities.
But if the ones that are on the floor, no?
No, that's during school hour, that's, they would have to be wearing them during that.
Are still.
The only thing that wouldn't is the after-school hour activities.
How does that work when you have advanced PE that are in different classes, different grades?
They take them off in the.
Yeah, so, so wouldn't that be the same thing?
At certain, during, for certain things, other things they have on.
Well, doesn't that apply during an activity?
No, that's where the the confusion is too, because my thinking would be, like, during basketball warmups, they wouldn't have to wear.
Right.
But they do.
They choose to.
They choose to, is their option, or their coach's option.
Yeah, so.
It's in our rules that they have, it's in our rules that they have to wear a mask.
Yeah.
When they're sitting on the bench or warmups and stuff, it's in our rule, the only time you don't, in our rules, if I'm right, the only time you don't have, can't, don't wear a mask is when you're playing.
Isn't that a High School Activities Association rule?
I wasn't recommending.
Oh, okay.
But we never ever changed our rules.
But you guys kept it that way, right?
See, we didn't change.
Change that right now?
That wouldn't be changing if you went after hours.
That's what we're doing now.
All that would change, so Mr. Schaefer couldn't say you don't have to warm up with masks if this was a goal.
Unless he wanted them to.
Brett's motion, Brett's motion, no.
Yes.
We'd do that.
Yes.
But back to what JR's getting at is during school, these, they're playing dodgeball, they gotta have masks on.
No, and if they're in their cohort, if they're stealing from others, they don't have to, so.
Not during play. Because they're in their classrooms.
Yes, they won't be, they won't be following those guidelines.
Some will.
So it, it, they'll have to wear.
So maybe picking and choosing guidelines.
Do we, do we, do we know what the activities are yet?
Huh?
When we did prom, when we did dodgeball, it was always class against class.
One on each side.
Yeah, one on each side.
Yeah, but there's, there's other things that they're doing.
That they put on their mask.
Boy, I I would say if they're physical.
That's what I'm getting at, is there's certain things, I want to make it so that as long as they're out on that floor participating, they don't have to wear masks.
Great.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at, if they go into the stands, put on the mask, that's fine, but once they're out on that floor, I don't want them to have to wear the masks.
No, that shouldn't be in the, during the school day, if they're in the stands, they wear the mask then.
Yeah, so then when they're participating, they don't have to, and we're doing, that's, we're okay with that, that's, I'm gonna be okay in stating that. With what you guys have on the table, I'm gonna be able to do that.
But any after-hours activity is optional mask.
Yeah, it's.
But this is, but there, but there's Snow Week activity during the day.
The Snow Week activities during the school day.
So if they're playing dodgeball, does that mean they have to wear a mask?
Not on the court.
Not when they're on.
Well, he'd have to make a amendment.
I don't know, you guys didn't like my rule when I made it earlier, and you voted that down, so now it's.
But we did, we voted down your all.
But you said during school hours.
Non-cohort, like, that all makes a difference.
But during school hours, they're supposed to wear them then, right?
I feel like we can make it work, we made homecoming work.
Well, I mean, I think we could, but I mean, that's kinda.
So then make it work.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I made the first motion, so you guys can make it work if you want it.
Have the class activities where you're cohorts, you're in a cohort, you're planning activities, so you don't have to wear a mask.
However you've been doing it, yes.
However you've been doing it, yes.
I, yeah, that would, I think that would work, Mr. Wilson, but it's just it. We don't want to get into that area, well, you're supposed to wear a mask, you didn't wear a mask, you should have worn a mask, there's a lot of.
I don't think anybody's gonna get in trouble from the board, that's what we're saying, however the pepper alley runs.
Right.
Nobody is getting in trouble.
What you guys want to do is treat that the same as you would during the school day.
And after.
I would just say they plan activities where they're with, like, classmates or people that they're comfortable around, then they don't have to wear the masks. And spectators can be in their cohorts, wearing them or not wearing them, just like we would.
But is that really gonna work for what you have planned?
Going on there, yeah.
That's a question for Sammy, not.
He hasn't had anything planned yet.
I know everything that they're doing, that's why I, I want to know if they're out there.
Stacy, you have a question.
Did the guidelines change where, um, you don't have to wear a mask if you're within six feet of somebody?
The guidelines have not changed anywhere.
We don't.
No.
I don't think they have, so it doesn't matter if you're, if you're with a class or not, if you're within six feet.
You're supposed to have a mask.
You're supposed to wear a mask.
Yes.
Doesn't matter where you're at.
It's recommended.
It's recommended.
That's recommended.
You don't have to, there's no mask mandate.
It's recommended, because we've talked about that with our little kids too.
So you add that to state that if you are, if you are supposed to quarantine, and then you don't have your mask within your cohort, well, that's where the contact rate.
Yes. But both people also have to be wearing a mask, so it doesn't make a difference if one is and one isn't.
And that's why I have my basketball players to wear the mask.
Wear their mask.
But it doesn't matter if they're around somebody who's not, they're still getting quarantined.
So like I said, the guidelines haven't changed.
As far as quarantining, no. If you're, if you're, if you're within six feet of somebody for more than fifteen minutes, and they had COVID, or they have COVID, you have to quarantine.
Aren't as big as lasting longer than fifteen minutes. I'm not pointing at right now.
Fourteen and forty-five seconds.
I think so too, that's what I'm saying, we can make it work with like.
I'd rather have it as optional.
Mr. Samuelson, the only thing he told me is elementary school boys, we ten persons, we don't have to, he will make it work so that we're spread out. Anger.
And this is, but if, if the kids just know what the guidelines are, they can plan activities around those guidelines. And they're, they're very creative, they can have games with basketball players that are doing pepper alley activities, the, the boys that are doing that, the freshmen are doing, you know. They can make it work if that's what the guidelines are, because they really want to have a pepper alley, so, so, and whatnot, yes.
Okay, we're good, we're good with your motion.
And so am I correct that the motion is to stay with the school day the same as now, after-hours masks are optional?
Correct.
Right.
That's what our motion is, and a second.
Accepting special possibilities.
Any other discussion?
Reread it, Lindsay, so we know what we're voting on.
Motion to, during school days, masking stays the same, after-hours masks are optional.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, so then that is the coordination then?
No, we're after hours.
After hours.
So no more masks.
One, one's either optional, one's either.
You're not wearing it now.
What are you doing with this?
I'm in my pod.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, roll call.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Chad.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Eric.
There was a thank you card we passed around, we got some for correspondence. Is there anything else anybody has or discussion?
Just, just so we're clear that you don't have to wear masks at morning meetings anymore.
Yeah.
Well, it says after hour.
I was like, I'm in there in school, hey.
Yeah, it'd be none of them morning meetings.
And morning.
Darn, I need breath mints again.
Any other?
Back to brushing routine.
Discussion questions, anything else? Next meeting, March tenth, look at that evaluation form, I need that by third or fourth, somewhere in that week before that.
I got that one this time, I saw, is that the one that got me on that?
Yep. We're adjourned.